Call to order the border county commissioners work session from May 6, 2014. Welcome everybody, please join us for the pledge of allegiance and the salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, as we establish our friendship among our ancestors.
John, are any changes need to come on the agenda?
None that I know of.
The schedule is ready.
Second? Motion is second to approve the agenda, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those signify or say no?
Aye.
Motion passes. The general purpose of the county work session is to inform the Grant County border commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed in the next regular meeting, and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1401, we welcome the public to attend county work sessions, but there will be no public input permitted at this time. So, John, if you'll go ahead and review the May 8 regular meeting agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, we'll start off the meeting, we have a public hearing discussion regarding the adoption of an ordinance, 14-02, entitled An Ordinance Establishing Firefighter Emergency Response Authority, Fire Equipment Procurement Standards and Rules Regarding Fire Hazards Applicable to the General Public in a Position of Burn Restrictions During Severe Drought and Other Fire Emergencies.
Yes.
I was just going to point out for you all that we did have a suggestion for a language change, more of our citizens, and let's see, it is on page three, under section three, paragraph A.
Did you say page three?
Page three, section three.
It's not that draft, get rid of that, don't you have this second?
Oh, sorry, I didn't have the same thing.
No, we just have the draft. Oh, it has the draft. You don't have that?
Okay, this is under section, section three.
Do you have that under the draft?
Maybe not, maybe not.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, it was good.
Maybe we can look it up in the back of the书.
Change.
Okay, so we're at page three, section three, paragraph A, the third line. Before it said, "A fire hazard is defined as any unsafe accumulation of any combustible material," and we've changed it to "flammable." And I didn't see a problem with that, and I talked to our fire management officer, and he didn't see a problem with it either. It's just a broader, it's broader.
Activity like that, how are you, how's that going to be regulated?
I'm sorry, could you say that?
How you have burn combustible materials or flammable materials up against your house? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, it says, "No person shall knowingly maintain a fire hazard for purposes of this section, a fire hazard is defined as any unsafe accumulation of flammable material or any vacant building which does not have combustible, which does not have all combustible waste to move therefrom and which is not secured to prohibit unauthorized entry." So, when somebody finds what they consider a fire hazard, is Randy going to go out and address it?
Yeah.
Or somebody else, or?
I guess in my view is what will happen is if somebody calls us and lets us know, or if we're seeing it, Mr. Villa will go inspect it as well as the code enforcement officer. Gilbert Hilton is the one that enforces our code on burn.
And this one's the sheriff's office is the one that's enforcing this ordinance?
So.
So, yeah, Randy would be the first, first in line, and then the sheriff's office.
Well, and the reason why I say the code, because Gilbert enforces the trash on property, and this would also fall under trash on property if you have a bunch of combustible material put up against your house, and so the code enforcement officer could also look at it because he takes care of weeds and built-up materials on your property to be removed. So, it could be enforced by both, well, I guess this ordinance would be enforced by Randy and the sheriffs, and then the code enforcement ordinance would also kind of back this up.
So, the sheriff's department would cite the person for violating ordinance 14-2, and the penalty for that would be a $300 fine and 90 days in jail, up to?
It could, yes, and I think we'd probably take the least penalizing avenue first to get somebody to fix the problem. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know. Do we get the choice? I mean, once they're cited, doesn't the magistrate?
I think the sheriff's office does warn you.
Once they're cited, different factor comes at that point, and what would happen? It'd be filed in the magistrate court, magistrate court then will set up a hearing, or first of all, they would come in and have an opportunity to plead guilty or not. Once they're pleaded not guilty, then there is a trial where the judge would make a determination of definition, and also if it's a violation.
Okay, so, that being said, I would be interested in hearing from the sheriff on what his, what his instructions to his officers are going to be when he, when Randy reports something to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and what will happen is, if we get a complaint on it, obviously we're going to go out and investigate. We'll give them an opportunity to get it removed the first time, depending on what it is.
So, like a verbal?
A verbal, to get it cleaned up by, that's exactly what we're doing now with littering and stuff like that, when they complain about a lot of trash being on somebody's property. But we'll do that, and if they don't comply by a certain, the next day, then they can be cited for the ordinance, we will issue them a non-traffic citation and send them to the magistrate court under the ordinance, and then it's up to the court to proceed with their proceedings from there.
Okay, so, at that point in time, you've cited this individual, and I go to the magistrate and plead guilty, and the magistrate says $300. I go, "Thank you very much, here's your $300," and I go online, and I don't clean it up. What do we do then?
Well, then I guess we go back again and go through the same process.
So, we have a remedy of cleaning it up and billing them?
Currently, we don't, under the solid waste ordinance, we have the ability for Gilbert to go in and clean them, and then what we would do is go to magistrate court and try and get magistrate court to have those people reimburse us, but that's part of the problem that we've talked about with the solid waste ordinance, there's not a lot of teeth for the magistrate or the courts to actually force these people, they try and get them to pay back what Gilbert has done and people have complied, is we've worked with the solid waste authority and we've brought a roll-off out to their properties, and those people will go ahead and clean up and fill the roll-off, and then we have it hauled over because we would pay for the material anyways in our tipping fees if it were to go through for those big areas. We don't, the solid waste authority ranges with those individuals to haul it out, they do all the cleanup themselves. It was the same with the cow hides that we had, the packing plant in the Arenas Valley was storing all the cow hides, Gilbert arranged with solid waste authority, they worked with that person and brought a roll-off out there, he loaded them all up and they hauled them off.
This is a separate ordinance that deals with this, and I used to deal with it all the time, where Mr. Hilton would cite someone into my court and such, then if in fact we had a trial and I found a good guilty or he pled, then we would follow, and it gives a real good description of exactly the steps. The steps, then you have so many days to clean it up, if you fail to do so, then the county will go in there and clean it up, and then you're going to be, get the bill from the county for cleaning it up, and that's a second step.
I think it is a separate ordinance. Yeah, I think that needs some work on it, too. I think what we really need to do is put some kind of a follow-up, follow-up steps on what we're going to do afterwards, make sure that it does get done, because I know we've had other cases in the past that we haven't been able to complete or go after, after so many days, and of actually citing them and just checking to see what they're doing, and no one's ever actually followed up to continue on some of these yards or properties, so I think we really need.
Yeah, I did some of them, and they were doing bad. And it's just a difficult thing, and Mr. Hilton and I have had the conversation before, even since I've been a commissioner, about really going over that ordinance, and I'm not looking at doing another. I got, I got the animal ordinance now, that's enough for my plate right now.
Yeah, and so.
We'll have another one next year.
Yeah.
Next year I'll take that one, because it's going to take about a year for the dog.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure we were all clear on the process and knew exactly what we were doing. So, is there any other questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that I had changed the word combustible in the third sentence to flammable, but I overlooked that it's actually in the, in the fourth sentence also, so I need to go back and revise combustible in the fourth sentence and change it to flammable, so that it matches the previous sentence. I also wanted to point out to the commissioners that this ordinance will repeal the emergency ordinance that we just adopted a couple weeks ago, and so this will go into place, and the other one will be repealed, and then a fire management officer will then post restrictions immediately afterward, is what the intent is, so that we don't have a lapse in a time of restriction. No, no.
Okay, any other questions?
Randy wants to add anything about that.
Randy, you got anything? Is this what the chainsaws are? And would we, if you're doing it justice, have we to add some kind of a system at the end of what should take place after they are cited?
You have to make sure it's clearly legal.
I can work, but my understanding is by statute, we have certain penalties that we can impose in these ordinances, I can work, it doesn't mean we can't have a system outside of these ordinances.
Wouldn't be a mistake, no, if you get a certain violation at the same.
Well, I mean, you know, there is, we don't, you know, they're not necessarily going to be penalized at the highest level of, you know, jail time and 300, so presumably a judge is going to look at each time they get cited and they're back in court, and so a judge would, is going to increase penalties.
Like I said, it would agree, that most judges will go ahead and have it cleaned up, they'll have to pay the cost, the court cost, we're talking about what it is now, 75 bucks or something like that, and they have to pay the court cost and put them on probation for a period of time, like the 90 days, and give them 30 days to clean it up, if they fail to do it, then they're called back into court and then assessed whatever amount is needed.
Commissioner Hall, that would be maybe something we could talk with the judges about, or Judge Lanning, and see if that's maybe a process that she would be open to.
That's a normal process, so that's something that she or Judge Hall would do every day.
And if they got called back in, my experience with the, with the judges.
In every hearing, a probation hearing.
And then the penalty would increase as they fail to comply.
Page four, number five, going up to the 300 max.
So, I think there's already the flexibility or the authority for the judges to.
And or jail.
Yeah.
I mean, if they completely thumb the nose at the statute and the judge's orders, then the judge has the ability to assess 90 days in jail.
I got a question for you. Page four, change, I'm filling in. Okay, page four, number five, the whole reason we're regulating the use of chainsaws is for spark arresters, right?
Yes.
What's the difference between running a chainsaw without a spark arrester, or running a weed eater, or a lawnmower, or any other?
Mr. Chairman, I see your point, and I wanted to point out that these are just a guideline for our restrictions, so if you wanted to talk with the fire management officer before he did issue the new restrictions, and he'll have the flexibility to use these and others, or to change these a little bit, this is just a guideline that we're going to adopt. I put it in there because these are the restrictions we've used in the past, so it would have to make up something new every time you issue restrictions, but again, there's going to be flexibility that you can speak with the fire management officer or the county manager and express your concerns and give suggestions.
As well as the public. Nobody's going to ever be asked anything unless a fire starts. That's, and they come up and you say, "How did this start?" "Well, I was using blank." My other question would be, when you say chainsaws, it's all inclusive of ever chainsaw made out there, but an electronic, electric chainsaw shouldn't be included in that?
Well, you can get approval to use those, that's where it is, you get the approval from the fire management.
You shouldn't have to come in if you're going to use a electric chainsaw.
Well, again, this is something that you can work with the fire management and give your suggestions and concerns, I mean, if it doesn't make sense to be in there, then you'll have the flexibility to remove or add.
And Randy and I had a conversation about this, and a little bit I know that they could actually go and get a permit from you, correct? Can you kind of explain that so the public will be aware?
Mr. Chairman, and there's a word. I think for the purpose, because we're in severe drought now and we move forward with these restrictions, but I am, in the future, going to take a look and see what really was working and what wasn't in these restrictions. We understand that, yeah, that lawnmowers can hit rocks and it's caused just so much of a spark if the chainsaws, you know, cutting down, you know, say oak or something, or you do that at night and you'll see a lot of sparks coming out of there, but the fact is, is that right now we're in severe drought, we're just trying to push this forward, we do have the application for them to come in and fill out, look at the property, see what the project is and sign off on it. I don't see a lot of people at this point, besides the contractors that are asking for the permits on the chainsaws, the ones that I've spoken to and have signed off on, have former firefighters that work for them, that were chainsaw guys on the forest service, and so with that, I think it makes it a little bit easier for them, they understand, you know, the severity of it if they do cause a fire, but I'm working with them, and we'll look at it as we go forward. Right now, we just feel, I personally feel that these restrictions are going forward, and we will look at them next year.
Yes, we're writing down an amendment here.
Yeah, if you look at number five, page five, number 11, that also catches that chainsaw, or the weed eaters things you were talking about, it says, "Any source of ignition which the county fire management officer or Grant County manager deemed to be a hazard." And so, if somebody's using a weed eater that doesn't have that spark arrest or anything, it could be deemed a hazard, and that would be prohibited in accordance with the notice posted, so that gives Randy that authority so that we don't have to list every single item that could possibly be used. As he comes upon it, he can make a determination, and when he posts his notice of the restrictions, he can make the determination what is or isn't viable.
Okay, on Thursday, I'm probably going to propose this motion to amend on number five. After use of, add any motorized, and then after chainsaws, add, or any other motorized landscaping equipment that does not have a spark arrester is prohibited.
I think some of the problems we're getting here, you know, with respect to the chair, you know, we can, with the statutes, we could list forever different types of equipment, not just landscaping, that they wouldn't be able to, so you still haven't met it, and so sometimes this is, this is written as a real type of document, document for these, for fire hazards and stuff in the county and the rural area, this isn't something that, say like in a, in a home or stuff like that they're talking about, I don't think, but we could, we could write and we could think of different types of machinery that they may have in our county, where we want to have some kind of resistor or some kind of, what about the catalytic converters? We must have something to cover the old catalytic converters, that's a good example. After all, you just, it's so ridiculous that you just.
I agree, I mean, just to be totally clear, what this ordinance is for, it's not to go out and find somebody that's mowing the lawn. What this ordinance is for 100% is for liability after the fire has started.
You'll never cover a hole, you're going to die in there, you'll never do it.
Well, then, just take out the word landscaping.
She'll not call.
All we're looking for is liability.
On the bottom of your vehicle.
Well, then why have chainsaws in there? Why list one if you're not going to list more?
Because chainsaws are whenever they're doing the woodcutting out in the mountains, hills.
Okay.
I know, but if you read the sentence right before the list, it says, "Such restrictions may include, but are not limited to," so it's discretionary, so even if, we can work on the language that you're concerned about, but even if we decide later that's really not the best language, we can still post restrictions that are different from these suggested restrictions. This is just a guide that I thought would be helpful.
Okay. Well, and not only that, but I think we need to do a better job notifying the public stating that, you know, make sure you use the proper equipment when you're out there, make sure if you don't have a restorer, make sure you check with a fire management person, see if they can use it, and I think that's the main thing, is getting, getting the word out, getting good information out.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's exactly the point, and that's what I will do from a fire management standpoint, is to make sure the public's aware, make sure that our volunteer fire departments and our local fire departments are aware of where the county is, with the guidelines of restrictions, and just to monitor those in their own districts and making sure that they follow, and that's, again, I agree with Commissioner Hall, I mean, even put, from a guy hauling his landscaping equipment on his trailer and a chain scraping on the highways, it's going to cause sparks, so, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that go in, so what we're trying to do here, and like you said, Mr. Chairman, is just the liability enforcement trying to take care of that, so, other than that, I think that this is a good guidelines to follow. I haven't had any major issues, maybe you guys have had more phone calls than I have on the chainsaw issue, but the ones that I've have spoken to have been okay with the way it's worked, as long as they're able to do it with the right, as long as I go and inspect it and make sure that they follow the guidelines and have some type of water source where they're doing their work, and I haven't had any issues with that, but I'll be sure to make sure that we get to, get out to the public.
Okay, any other questions on the? Okay, go ahead, John.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mr., next item we have is the financial reports, we have the expenditure listing dated May 5, 2014, we have a new package, it's for $750,969. It's pretty much normal expenditures, we've got a couple tables in there, we're getting close to the end of the year, so you've got to where our expenditures come up, around the $700,000 range, mid-700, as we're trying to finish out grants that expire at the June 30 timeframe, trying to get those last minute purchases in on those grants, so that we don't lose that money going forward in the next year, as typically happens in the sheriff's office because of the grants that he gets for some of his equipment and for some of his overtime projects, they do have expiration dates on them, so that's when we see our costs towards that, like I said, towards this last May-June timeframe, kind of ramp up a little bit, and then, and also we cut off spending around the June 15 area to close our books out and get everything cleaned up and get everything in, so then you see it tail off in that last month of June, so these are pretty much normal expenditures for the county, nothing out of the extraordinary.
Any questions on the expenditure part? Not today, any?
Not today.
The next items for resolution are 14-19, attempt to adopt an ordinance dedicating in quarterly installments an equal, an equal amount of gross receipts tax of 1/12% applied to the taxable gross receipts reported during the prior fiscal year by persons engaging in business in the county to a newly created safety net, care pool fund, and providing an effective date transferring fund. What this is, is part of Senate Bill 268, it's requiring all counties to get in place by July 1, an ordinance that will dedicate the equivalent of 1/12 of a gross receipts tax, it doesn't have to come from gross receipts tax, it comes from any source of funding, but we have to set aside 1/12, and they take the 12 based on our last year's gross receipts tax, it's 1/12 of that, it has to be sent up in quarterly payments to, this is the new sole community provider, the sole community provider fund has gone away and it's now the safety net healthcare pool fund, this is where the reimbursements will come from. For Grant County and Hila Regional Medical Center who receives our monies that we send up, basically, we will send approximately about $480,000 is about a 12, Hila Regional Medical Center, the last numbers we saw be around 5 million, it all varies, it all depends on people who come in, their best estimate was about $5 million. So, it's going to be a better than 10 to 1 match coming back to hospital where it used to be a 3 to 1 match to our hospital, it's still a reduction, the hospital used to receive $18 million in sole community provider funding, and now they receive 5, so it is a reduction in their spending, and the hospital's been working diligently to make sure that they can continue to operate under those guidelines, there is no threat of the hospital closing the doors, as people have said, you know, as we were going through session, this is just, they've adjusted for it, they're planning for it, and we're going forward, and so that's will be the new pool that will be required to send our payments up. It is March, June, September, and December, so the program really doesn't start till July 1, so the first payment for the county would be September into it, then December, it would go that way, because even though there was the emergency ordinance on Senate Bill 268, the actual collection of the revenues doesn't start till July 1, after July 1. So, but that's what it'll be for, this is the notice to adopt it in two weeks, so at the next commission meeting, this ordinance will come in front of you for adoption. New business, we have the recognition of state champion Columbia High School band.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is, well, something we, it seems to be a recurring thing we do every year, which is great, the band comes down, one year they actually brought the band in and played for us here, I don't know if they're going to do that again this year or not, so we will check, I will have initial check and see if that's possible.
If they do, I can arrange transportation.
You know somebody?
I know someone.
I know somebody that knows about it. Know somebody that has some buses in that area that they might be able to use, so that's one thing that, like I said, it's becoming something we do every year, which is great, that they continue to win state championships in the band, and then there's a couple items we want to add, one is we received from the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department Chief, Mr. Roger Rose, the fire department has been looking at purchasing a new Rosenbauer American Stock tanker for their station, it's through Artesia Fire, it's on one of the contracts that we have, they've looked at the truck, they have the funding in their fire funds to use, and so they would just like approval from the commission, so this will be an item on our new business to get approval from the commission to proceed forward with purchasing this tanker, it's $162,738 for it, like I said, it will not come out of the general fund at all, it will come out of fire funds, the fire funds, which this year they received $292,920 for their fire funds for the Tyrone Fire Department and all their substations, and then the other item that they have is, they would like to, there's a truck at Columbus Fire Department in Columbus, New Mexico, it's an old brush truck, they've gone and looked at it, and Columbus Fire has offered to give it to the Tyrone Fire Department up here, transfer it over to them, and so they're just asking the commission to accept the transfer of that fire truck. It's a, it's a 1988 Chevy with a diesel engine and a 4x4 manual transmission, it has three discharge outlet pumps, and it currently runs at 200 PSI, it's been tested, and so it works properly, it's got 38,000 miles on it, and it's equipped with the booster reel in line of 200 feet, and so that's, they would like to bring it up here and put it in service.
38,000?
No, 38,000. Fire trucks don't get a lot of miles, they usually wear out at very low miles, just because of, it's very abusive miles, and then you end up losing pumps or something like that, that's why you end up getting rid of and replacing.
They don't have fires in Columbus, or?
They do, this is an old truck they had, they replaced it down there, and so it was brought to the Tyrone's attention that it's available, and they spoke with them, and they're willing to transfer it up to them, and so the chief would like the commission to accept the transfer of that, so he can bring it up here and put it into service. And then the other item is, as part of the senior services program, as part of an audit that Terry just did, they're requiring him to adopt his own set of policies and procedures, they can't just be under the Grant County employee manual, and our policies and procedures, he has to take one and actually adopt it as the Grant County senior program, as part of the requirements of those senior grants, and so he's given his policies and procedures for the commission's approval. Yeah.
Renee, Abby has been looking.
Um, Renee, Abby has been looking at it. Um, we've got a couple, she brought a couple items to me that will touch base with Terry.
I might touch base with him and, and see, there's a couple of things I'm concerned about, but overall, I think it's, it's mainly just how this program works.
Yeah.
There's a few areas that kind of overlap with our personnel manuals that, um, I'll talk with him about.
So we'll get with him today or tomorrow and get that. But, but this is a requirement for him to continue to operate the senior programs. He's gotta adopt his own policy and procedure manual. In the past, what we have done is just taken our employee manual and put his title page on it, send it in, and they don't want that anymore. They want something that lists his congregant meals and things like that, because we don't have it in our employee manual. So, so those will be the two items that we add.
You know, I think probably at this time we, we're a miss on our, on our agenda. We probably need to go into county reports and then do executive session, because I don't know how long the executive session will be today.
And, and we do need to have executive session too, next to actually needing it, correct?
What? I don't know if you're going to need one or not.
We could go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I mean, we could add it.
And if we don't need it, we could just.
Yeah, we can all get rid of it.
If this to have it, please.
So I guess at this time we'll stand for county reports, and, uh, I know the sheriff has something else to go to, so I'm gonna let you go first, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, we just got through with the tour of the Hila, uh, event that we participated in. Um, actually, it was an eventful, um, event. You were all aware of the crash they had up on 180 coming out of, uh, going into Catron County. Uh, other than that, it, from what I understand, everything else went smooth, uh, without major problems. That was only the big problem they had. Um, what we're preparing for now is gonna be assisting the, the city with the Blues Festival coming up in this month. I'm not sure of the exact dates. I think it's during the, the holiday weekend, but, uh, we're gonna be assisting them with that event, um, uh, with security and stuff like that. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to report is currently I have two positions open, uh, where we will be testing on this Friday. I have 17 applicants for two positions. Uh, that's pretty good. Uh, numbers are actually coming up from the past. It was rare we'd get so many applicants, and, uh, now it's good to see we have a big pool to, to choose from. Um, the other thing, um, is, uh, my staff's been working really well. They've been keeping up. We're short-handed a few positions and, uh, been keeping up with the pace now that the weather's warming up, more activity is coming out. Um, so we're, we're actively working, uh, staying busy. So I wanna thank my staff for what they do and, and how they've been taking care of business out there. The other item, the last thing I have is, the reason why I'm leaving is that we have that Give Grande, uh, activity going on today. It's for nonprofits. They're asking for the public to come out and donate anything, whatever funding you have. Um, I'm actually voluntold to be at. The one that I participate in is gonna be with El Refugio. I'm a board member with El Refugio, and, uh, we have a booth out there, and we're asking anybody in the public to come out and donate, take pennies, quarters, nickels, whatever, anything that you can spare. We ask the public just to come out and donate today. Uh, it's a big event for the state of New Mexico, and, uh, I encourage our, our community to support our local nonprofits and, and go out. There's gonna be several areas that have booths, uh, collecting money, so. Other than that, um, I have no que, uh, nothing else unless you have questions.
No questions for Sheriff? Okay. I just got one thing, like, with the association meetings last week, and one of the things that was brought up on cross, uh, cross, uh, commissioning is our insurance, uh, we're, we're self-insured, and John knows a lot more about this, but when, when they're cross-commissioned and they're acting in that capacity, they're concerned that we're gonna have to start insuring those individuals when they're acting in that capacity. So we may have to, and, and none of this is set yet, but anytime an outside agency is acting outside of their scope of normal business, we may have to report those hours and start paying insurance for that. So just something that you, to make you aware that it may co, start costing us money to do those cross-commissioning things.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You are correct there. Um, I did receive an email from the sheriff's affiliate, so we are, we are as an affiliate gonna look deeply into it and see how it's gonna affect us and how we're gonna proceed with it. But that has, that concern has already been brought to the sheriff's affiliate attention, and we are gonna address it, and hopefully we can come out with an outcome that'll be beneficial. I mean, I'd hate to, you know, the concerns that are out there in regards to not cross-commissioning, certain people would, uh, really affect our operation on, on trying to, um, deter and fight the crime that we are. So, I mean, that's a serious issue that we're gonna deal with and, and hopefully come up to a good conclusion.
I know the Curry County Sheriff was concerned about the drug task force and, and things like that. He was less concerned about the other cross-commissioning that they did, but that one was the one he was really concerned about.
That's right. But, um, other than that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to excuse myself to go to this other function, um, if there's nothing else.
Heather?
Thank you.
Are you sure? Madam Sessions, do you have anything to say?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. We finished our protest period, and we didn't receive very many protests, but, um, the people that have protested, I want them to give us some time. It usually takes us about two or three weeks to get out to their property to review the protest. And I also wanna remind the people that did not protest that they can still come in if they're concerned about their evaluations, and we can still go over it. If I'm not in the office, uh, one of the appraisers can. I am in the office Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, most of the time, and, um, I do have an open door policy, so I welcome anyone that comes in and wants to go over the evaluation again. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything going on in your room, Mr. Burke?
Just a little bit, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, today starts in our office, the early, or absentee in-person and absentee voting. You can come by and vote in our office in person, 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, the entire month of May. Um, you can call us for a request for an absentee ballot to be sent to your home. Our phone number is 574-0042. It is an application process, so you will receive an application that you need to fill out prior to getting a ballot. Or you can log onto our website and print out a application there and mail that into us as well. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to call us, 574-0042. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian, do you have anything to say?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
And Commissioners. Just a brief report from me. I was just here a week or so ago to add on to, Mr. Sorry talked about Senate Bill 268. Uh, we know the, the basic proposal in the bill, but what has left, been left to work out is the dispersal of the monies, and, uh, we were just on a phone conference with HSD and the Hospital Association last week, and there's just still a lot of confusion around this. We heard from Brent Ernst from HSD, who was talking about, uh, the calculation that we use to determine our uncompensated care. And as Mr. Sorry knows, there's a big spreadsheet and a worksheet to determine this. And just as an example for Hila Regional, we're going back to 2013 fiscal, our uncompensated care was approximately $9 million. Brent introduced a concept to us, to, to everyone in New Mexico that said we were miscalculating that, and that we were supposed to have added in sole community provider monies and some other monies. But what that essentially did for Hila Regional is it brought our uncompensated care amount to $37,000. So now, Mr. Sorry spoke about the fact that we were expected to get around $5.3 million. That's based on how our uncompensated care. So now, there's a big uproar in the state from the Hospital Association, um, and further questions towards HSD about what is this all of a sudden this change in how we are calculating our uncompensated care? I put it out there just as information at this point, the Hospital Association is up in arms. We'll be meeting with our legislators, uh, later this week on Friday to start to have these discussions so we can get further clarification. Um, so there's lots of theories around there as to why all of a sudden there's this late correction in the calculation. We don't understand how, when we're asked to calculate our uncompensated care, um, it's around $9 million. The fact that we got monies through the old sole community provider program, it was because of our uncompensated care. It doesn't reduce the fact that we have that uncompensated care. So there's theories abound there. I won't put one out about why, how HSD is attempting to make up for the $9 million that they, so that's, of course, not my theory.
I don't think that's how it works.
I've, I've heard, uh, yeah, I've heard others talk about that. So we're working through that, though, and I wanna give, of course, HSD, this is nothing against Brent or HSD, uh, or our Hospital Association. We're working through that presently, just wanted you guys to know. Uh, another quick update is on our CFO position. Many people are aware, uh, we have been recruiting for a CFO. Um, our goal is always internal and local first. If, if that is not an option, or if that's not working out, uh, then we move outside of our general area. We have been involved in that process for the last, you know, month, month and a half, two months. We, uh, ended up engaging with two national search firms who screened and put in front of us 15 CFO candidates. We did phone interviews, web-based, uh, interviews. We brought the top five candidates on site, had approximately six or seven hours worth of interviews, intensive interviews with, uh, two separate groups. We had some board input into that process, and we have, uh, offered, uh, the position to our top candidate, and she has accepted that position. Her name is Omira Heekin. She's, uh, presently a CFO in another hospital in New Mexico. She'll be joining us on June 2nd. The last, uh, quick update is just on our finances. Our finances are, uh, as of the end of March, there's always a month delay, as of the end of March, we were still sitting good with cash, about 128 days. On the expense side, though, because we've received nothing from the state, um, as of December 31st, uh, we lost about 448,000, about 450,000 on the expense side of that equation. That puts us at about 1.8 million on the expense side behind for the year. Uh, so at the end of last year, we ended last year at $9 million in the red. We're at about 1.8. If things continue the way they have been, we're looking at about two, in the $2 to $3 million, we'll end the year on the expense side in the red. Uh, so once again, that's coming back from a $9 million loss. So we're looking at about a $6 million turnaround, but we've still got a long way to go, and as things continue to change in our environment, it, it's gonna continue to put pressure on us to look further and further into options for, um, beyond efficiencies, those kind of things. So we've been looking at those from the beginning, having those discussions with our board from the beginning about, you know, uh, core service offerings, can we continue to be all things to all people, those kind of things. Um, so we've had those dialogues since the beginning, and, you know, obviously we'll continue to have those as we continue to work on efficiencies, as we continue to maximize our revenue cycle. But, uh, things just continue to get more challenging in healthcare. Nobody's surprised. Uh, we're not surprised. And we're gonna just keep working at it.
Any questions?
We're asking for questions.
Yes, they can have a question.
Sure.
After, I, I've been out campaigning door to door, and I've had a few people ask me this question, which I kinda knew how to answer, but their question to me was, how do the lawsuits, uh, at the hospital affect our taxes or affect a hospital? Can you go ahead and, and answer that question for us?
Yes.
By the public?
Yeah, probably similar to the county. We have insurance, so anytime there's a lawsuit, that goes through your insurance. The insurance pays for that. Uh, so it doesn't come out of our cash in any way. Now, like any insurance, do your insurance rates go up the next year? Uh, you know, probably, but we continue to work with various insurance companies to maintain the lowest rates. So it doesn't come out of our taxes, doesn't come out of our bottom line, our cash in any way, shape, or form. We have insurance for those things.
So risk management is affected, and, and what we pay out is, is pretty much what I've told them, but I'm glad we're hearing it from you.
You're, you're right on hand.
And thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions? I wanted to, I had talked with Brian, um, last week we met on the sole community, well, safety net healthcare information. Um, one of the things, I did speak with Brent Ernest, I tried to call him when I was in a meeting with Brian. One of the things they're doing now, too, is they're trying to say, any monies you receive reduces your uncompensated care. They're not just looking at Medicaid uncompensated now, they're gonna look at anything. So it's, they're really, like Brian said, they're really bending the, the letter of the law to get as much as they can, and, and, you know, one of the things that we talked about at session was they put in there that this fund would also help support the state Medicaid program. And everybody kind of was balking at that, but we were explained why it was in there by certain individuals, and, um, so it was left in, and I think that this is kind of a push. They're trying to divert money from being paid to the hospitals to pay into that Medicaid because they made comments up there that pay almost a billion dollars into a state Medicaid fund. And so they're just trying to reduce their costs any way they can, um, is what it appears to mean. And that was our fear when we saw that, the, the chairman and I, and we tried to get that out of there, we said, there's no need to reference that, why don't we just stay? And everybody tells, oh, no, it's gotta be there. Even the lobbyists that were working for us told us it had to be in there, and, well, working for the, the counties, not for Grant County. And, uh, so I don't know. I don't know if that's part of this push, if that's why it had to be in there, so it gives them another avenue to, to have the counties pay for something they shouldn't have to pay for, kind of like the safety net healthcare fund.
Well, I fully expect in the next two years that, uh, maybe the penitentiary fund will run a little short, and they'll say, maybe the county needs to go ahead and carve out another eighth out of their gross receipts without, uh, any additional taxing, and just send it up here so we can run the penitentiaries. Uh, what's next? After that, the roads, the, the DOT isn't quite have enough money, so we'll just go ahead and have the counties go ahead and just send up another 12th up here for, I mean, this is just the beginning. We have to, we have this next legislative session, this has to be. And the DOT is. And stop right now before this, this governor, the next governor, or whoever, uh, continues to ravage counties to where we can't fulfill our, our, um, things that we need to do for our constituents, so.
Well, the DOT has already started with, uh, Mr. Moore's local government road funds. In the previous years, they'd send us an agreement, and then when their funding got cut, they would send us a revised agreement, cutting us by 25% after we'd already started the project. So we've already seen it happen on that end, and have kind of tried to fight to say, and, and their logic is, is the statute says the maximum amount they can distribute from a local government road fund, it doesn't set a minimum. And so they say they can adjust it down, was their logic. And so we've tried to get legislation that says they have to distribute the percentage that the legislature gives, because that's what the intent of the legislature, when they say distribute X number of percent to the local governments, that's what they mean, not up to that amount, but that's how they're reading it.
Just wanted to, with this state, uh, you know, once again, Hila Regional, we're committed to offering, supporting as many services as possible to our community. That's gonna continue to be our commitment, but it's very challenging now. And just to end with, uh, on behalf of Hila Regional, I wanna thank Mr. Sorry for his years of service and years of support, uh, for the hospital, and just formally thanks him much.
I just, um, to make sure that, I mean, that, I know that money's tough, but having Suzie up there last year, where I had a direct line to the hospital and be able to ask questions, I hope you plan on doing that again, because that's imperative, and we're gonna be weaker this next year because of some of the moves that are happening in the county, so.
Appreciate it. What are you doing, Ron?
I'm just, I'm all, I'm just jumping ship. Mike, what's your answer?
It is, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner members, respectfully submitting our report for the month of April, the May of 2014. Item number one, uh, policy procedures update. The status remains the same. Item number two, uh, detention facility update. Uh, we currently have four temporary vacancies. The time of reporting applications are being reviewed. Sergeant Bronagiri had been promoted to the position of operations lieutenant, and we have congratulated Lieutenant Aguirre on his accomplishments. Myself, Administrator Andazola, Sergeant Galindo, and our cert commander, uh, attend the Department of Corrections. They have newly hired a warden there at Southern New Mexico Correction Facility, and it's a twofold purpose that we would like to go down there. First of all, is to attend the ceremonies that we were invited to. The second is also, we're gonna meet with the operations training supervisor at Southern. They do have a going to meet with the operations training supervisor at Southern, they do have a corrections academy there in Las Cruces, and we'd like to tour their facility there, and also see permission for our officers to attend the academy to acquire forty-hour mandatory training. I have met, and know Secretary of Corrections, Secretary Mercantile very well, known him for a lot of years, he'll be in attendance, and prior to me acquiring this job, the relationship I have with Secretary Mercantile, once he got that position, he asked, he told me if there's anything that I could, or he could help me with, please let him know, so I'm going to, I'm going to talk to him and see if it's a possibility for officers to attend this training academy. Hopefully, he will allow this, allow us to do this at the very minimum cost or no cost at all. So that's what I'm shooting for. And if that's, if that's the case, we'll just send our officers up there for a week long, they can get their mandatory training, and it's excellent training, they can drive back and forth, so that's the other reason that I'd like to go up there and speak with Secretary Mercantile. Item number three, our assessment, the status remains the same. Training update, our newly hired officer, Officer Guron, she's doing very well, she's going through her field training right now, and we do expect her to successfully complete it. She's been an excellent candidate, a newly hired employee, she's picking up everything very well. Our inmate support program, we're continuing to meet on the program and see if we can progress forward with that. Our recognition award program, Officer Nottera, I think for the third time, has been nominated by his peers, we're very fortunate to have Officer Nottera, he's always there, he always comes to work, and anytime that we need anybody, he absolutely shows up, so he is very deserving of the third recognition for Officer, our Officer of the Month award. Our detention stats, the average daily population for April twelfth through May the fifth, seventy-three inmates, that's seven less than last month. High population males has been seventy-eight, eleven more than last month. High population females is eleven, that's four less than last month. For the month of April and May two thousand and fourteen, there were eighty-four inmates, which is four more than last month incarcerated in the facility, and this is a slight increase in the activity. Monthly arrest totals for April and May, Silver City Police Department had a hundred and seventeen arrests, New Mexico State Police had twenty-one, Grant County SO had twenty-two, Santa Clara ten, Baird eleven, Hurley had one, APO had three, and New Mexico Game and Fish had one. The detention facility conducted twenty-five district court transports, Division One magistrate court ten, Division Two magistrate court eleven, Silver City Municipal Court had thirteen, Santa Clara had zero, Baird had one, and Hurley Municipal Court had zero. Medical transports were zero as compared to two last month. Total number of transports for April and May totaled sixty as compared to thirty-eight last month. Our jail utilization and occupancy, number of inmates, offense levels, there were fifteen felonies, fifty-two misdemeanors, and the other probation violations and warrants total seventy-seven, for a total of one hundred and forty-four. Total hours in custody amounted to twenty thousand four hundred and thirteen point zero three, average length of stay is nine point one seven days, and sentencing shows an increase as compared to last month.
Stand for any questions?
No questions.
Yes, how's our medical program going there, the detention center?
Right now, Commissioner Hall, Mr. Chairman, we're having, we're, we're doing okay as far as the medical is, we're just having some administrative issues with, within the facility as far as the medicals. I think the problem is, the, when they're doing the telemedicine, I think we're dealing with practitioners who are not familiar with the setting within the detention facility itself, they've never really worked with the setting in the facility itself as far as our capabilities and the cell space that we have, so they're making decisions that right now I am addressing with them, in fact, I just sent them a mail today telling them that they, the medical staff needs to meet with us if they're going to be able to move any inmates within the facility themselves, because they're arbitrarily moving them, and we're running out of, we're just, we just need to, they need to discuss it with us before they make any moves, and that way, we know where they're going, and we know exactly how much space that we have available to us, and those are little things that we just need to work on.
Mike, have you saved any money as far as having to run? We still have to make runs to the emergency rooms, I understand that, but them being there, has that saved the county any money?
Yes, sir. I do believe that right now, we're paying approximately fourteen thousand dollars a month on our medical, and that is, that is considerably lower than what we were paying before. We had to take them to, say, HMS or somewhere else, or the hospital, or some of these other places, it is considerably lower than what we were paying before.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, and that is working well for us, yes.
Okay. Number one.
Hello, what's going on?
About the same old thing, we're still working on the TPC of the LGR projects for this year, we're currently hauling in chips, we should have over half of them hauled in by Friday, and then we should hopefully finish up by next week. We're going to do some blade patching over there on Kirkland Road tomorrow, other than that, pretty much business as usual down there. I did get our audit done on the Codestand Light Project, and had a couple of corrections we had to make in the paperwork, and I've got it all already taken care of, so it should be, county should be reimbursed here pretty soon, I don't know how long it's going to take them to get us reimbursed, but that will be in the process, too.
They've already done the inspection?
Yes, sir.
Done the inspection, so there's some, that's good? And so, any kind of timeframe of when the rules may happen?
Probably next week sometime.
Next week?
Yeah, I've been in touch with John over there, he'll let me know what's going on.
Are you staying in touch with the people involved?
Well, he's, he's kind of the spokesman for them.
He's a short timer, I don't know.
Not John, the John.
Oh, the other John, oh.
The other John, the gentleman whose house sits outside of.
Yes.
Can't sleep now.
Fairgrounds, we, I know we were really tight on time last year when we were trying to get the fair going, but we were going to put a culvert down that north side for all those drain spouts to drain in and get it to the, to the culvert underneath the road. Do we have time to do that before June?
Well, we want to, let me tell you, what they want to do is they're wanting to get some slabs poured out there for the cattle and stuff, so Mr. Cumbbo called, and of course, it's all panic now, but just.
Yeah, actually, I'm supposed to be with Mr. Cumbbo this afternoon, go out there and take a look at that.
Okay.
But before June, I don't think so, but we'll hop on it right after that.
They use a lot of kid labor, I probably shouldn't have said that, but.
FFA and floor labor, you know.
Illegal?
No, not when they're not paying them. It's more like a sweatshop that way. Don't get me saying that, okay?
They didn't want to leave it left at the fair park, so they'd all down to the shop to get, to get all that stuff put in for them. It won't take us very long to get that done.
I didn't think it would, I know there's maybe two water lines running down through there, that you can always find those with a backhoe and a hurry, I know.
Yeah, well, we made it, we'll put them in so we know where they're at.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that.
All right, thank you very much. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you know, we mentioned the senior program, we're working with Terry on the non-metro New Mexico on aging, they came down to an assessment on the program, as part of the policy that you are going to pass to try to have that in place, also working, taking a look at the centers, making sure that they're all functional the way they're supposed to be within the, you know, the senior program policies. Hurley has some issues there, because there's really not a senior center, it's a community center that's linked to us to, to feed the seniors, so we're working through that with Mayor and seniors at Hurley. So Terry will be attending, several months ago, the Legislative Finance Committee, I believe, John, I can't remember, the lady that came down and met with John and I and Terry for a couple of days, and they're going to have a kind of final review this Friday, so they invited Terry to be up, to be up at that meeting, so he'll be up at the, at the roundhouse, I believe the meeting is, on this Friday for that. Public Cominos are just trying to, trying to get all of those funds that have been owed to Grant County up to date, and all the reimbursements up to date, I'm working with Kim on that, and they're working on that today to try to figure out, you know, what's owed, and making sure that we've got those buildings out to people. Volunteer fire departments, we're just kind of praying, hoping that we don't get a big fire now, and then obviously, we're in drought, restrictions are still in place. We did have a fire, the Palm Fire up in Luna County, it was on the border of Grant and Luna County, FMO from Luna County did give me a call and ask me for some assistance, so I did send a couple of brush trucks and a tender, that's without leaving our own districts with coverage, so we worked with all the, all the two chiefs out of Fort Baird and Whiskey Creek, they were able to send a brush truck and a tender out there to assist it, burned over about a thousand acres on a very, very windy day, they had to shut down the highway, so I'm glad nobody got hurt and able to put that fire out. There was another fire this Saturday, I hear, the story goes that our chairman of the commission did a belly flop from his truck and was able to put that out, so I appreciate that without any report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's just what, that was a story that was told to me, so, but I really, I really appreciate that. The other thing is, is on the chipper, the chipper's up and running, it is being leased out as we speak, I did do a follow-up on that and spoke to the people that are leasing it from us, there's a couple of minor problems that can, that can be fixed, and so we're going to work on that. The Wind Canyon subdivision, along with Silver Fire, Grant County Fire, are going to have what they call a chipper day on May seventeenth. I don't have the full details yet, we will take the county chipper over there if it's not being leased out on that day, which I don't think it is, and assist with them with the volunteer work from our BFDs, along with Silver Fires, BFDs, and someone Tyrone, and some other people from the community, so it's going to be a community effort to try to do some fire prevention there. Now, Public Works, let's see, Public Works, very busy, as you all know, the weather's warming up, and we're, Baton Park, we awarded a bid for the stack of the parking lot, that work ought to be completed before the end of this month, awarded bid for the wall, the handrails that Commissioner Ramos had asked for, some steps down the consensus ban, that's going to start this week, Mr. Commissioner. Lay down some million, thank you, Earl, again, for getting that done for us and getting it over there. Shooting range, we're working a pretty good project, working with Freeport-MacMan on a grant that, to construct a new high house for skeet shooters, that is going to be done with five thousand dollars awarded, and then five thousand, I think, matched, I'm not sure, with in kind, with work and equipment to help them out over there. Freeport-MacMan has a program that some of their workers can do some volunteer work within the community, and they chose the shooting range, they gave them five thousand dollars, they're going to build a nice skeet chute, and we're going to work with them on that. And next year, hopefully, we do the shed, or the shack where they restore everything, and we call it the shack now, because that's basically what it is, but we're, so, so we're going to try to, with next year's funding, try to do the same thing and improve. I think with that, I think that we'll have a pretty good shooting range for the, for the community, as everybody knows, you know, with the amount of hunters we have in our community, I think it's going to benefit us in the long run, maybe have some meets there, you know, with, with the board, the board has worked with Justin really well on that, so that's in the process of being, now, we met with them yesterday. On the conference center, cleaning out some of the back rooms, I had a lot of, some of the old furniture and tables didn't match anywhere, anyplace, we contacted everybody and anybody that wanted these, and nothing really matched, so we cleaned that out, and got that going, preparing for the long weekends, you know, graduation parties are coming up, we had a gun show last weekend, so some of the big events are starting to happen now on a consistent basis, and we're working hard to make sure that the, the facility is clean, and up the park, we did tour the Hila, used a portion of it, the guys were able to get in there and paint some walls and have that set up, where they had some youth conferences on signing day, and so that was successful, so we were able to do that. Airport, working on the fuel needs at the airport, I think that's important, we had a call, two Black Hawk helicopters came in this weekend with no fuel, but they were able to get to Luna County and get some fuel, so we're working with them, we were approached by Desert Aviation out of Demi, they're also willing to help, help us get some fuel in until we actually get going, I don't know how that's going to work, it's very early, they just contacted Justin and I yesterday and spoke to us, and obviously, our manager is abandoning ship, so, so we're going to work with, we're going to try to get that done, I'm just a joke, John, I really appreciate everything you've done. Detention Center, they installed a new, we had a water heater that went out, and we, Justin was able to get that with no charge, a new one in, train has completed, all the HVACs work, all the HVAC work at the detention center, the staff at Public Works, all of them have been trained on it, so they know, you know, what to check for on certain issues and have problems with that. So all the facilities, we've got the air conditioners all hooked up and ready to go, because we already got some people that have called, and when are we going to do that? So summer's coming, and the heat's starting to warm up, and so we're trying to get all of our facilities up and running, so, so all of that's working. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
No, just thanks for, thanks for all the hard work over at Baton Park, it's looking really good, it always seems, amazed me how much work the maintenance department does with such little people, so tell these guys that, you know, keep up the good work, and we really do appreciate them.
I know that you guys sit out the specs on the, on the fuel trucks, I'm really concerned that a thousand is probably not enough, we need to really do some due diligence and find out what size truck we really need, don't let those, those fuel companies just shove something down your throat. And just on our public perception preservation, you know, since you had to talk about my fire putting out ability, I did it with the most modern of equipment, I drove up on the fire, and all I had in the back of my truck was an old milk crate, and within fifteen minutes, I had the fire at bay, just so you know.
We've got an opening at Center Re, the Volunteer Fire Department, our chief is down at the moment now, Mr. Chairman, and we appreciate if you want to come and take over.
So I'm going to make sure that you get everybody some milk crates.
Just wanted to let you know, giving an update, too, is that we did receive back from the state of New Mexico Aviation Division, the notice to proceed on our grant for purchasing of the fuel farm at the airport, so that grant is now in place, and we can proceed forward with the purchase of all the equipment out there and start setting up our contracts to fill it. So I don't know how long it'll take, we've already, like I said, we've got the notice to proceed, it is reimbursable, so we'll purchase it and then send for the reimbursement, they're going to pay up to one hundred thousand dollars of the cost, so it's a stated payment.
And, and, Randy, I just, I know this is probably John's last work session, and, John, I want to thank you for all the work you've done and the opportunities that you've given, you know, the county and the employees, and so I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I know that we, that they had a Colonial's board meeting, I think it was on Thursday of last week, and so hopefully, we did well with our project down there, it was a closed session, discussion next year's projects, but we did receive the, the final document, I think, for the award of last year's, which would be the, the planning project on North Hurley for the drainage and the roadway, so although we've already started using our matching funds, we're going to go ahead and get engineers to ramp up what they're doing now, so that we can, we can get that project done, and hopefully get it on next year's construction project, so, other than that, I've been trying to attend to some more individual type things around the county, we've got a lot of people, we've got some drainage issues, we've got some rideaway issues, we've got some, some, some questions from, just some residents have been hanging for a long time, we've been trying to clean those up, it's kind of difficult, most of the time, it takes a lot of research, they're either really old documents, or, or people, one of the things we may have to take a look at is a policy on, on developments that have actually dedicated rights of way, or roadways, or easements, or stuff to the county that we don't really know of until they kind of pop up, and then we don't really know what to do with them, because we own something that we didn't know we owned, and we have an issue or a problem, and... that we didn't know we owned. And we have an issue or a problem. And, and in this, in one instance, there was actually a, a roadway that was, um, part of a development and it's not a roadway, it's a drainage. And so we've got some issues with that drainage. So, uh, we don't really have a policy to be able to address those things. So I think that that's one thing we may have to bring to the commission and see if we can't clean those things up.
Well, I'll take care, care of it.
No, I already did. I passed that thing off there. So I, I did my job.
Well, you know, and most of the time, we can take care of them, you know, and we can, we can try and address the issues, uh, but it's, it's just kinda difficult because it seems to, it's reoccurring. And if we had a policy where we knew exactly what we needed to do, we could take care of it, uh, really quickly instead of having to take, you know, a couple of weeks or however long it may take. So, um, also, I just wanted to report on the, on the AWSA. Um, we've been working on, uh, with the Hila San Francisco Water Commission and trying to develop either an MOU or, or use the existing JPA that we have to, to, uh, ensure in, in, in the event that there is a diversion project that we, that we, um, uh, represent, um, uh, through, through the Southwest, uh, all the players in the Southwest, that we are able to, uh, have a voice in how, uh, any water is developed and used. And so, uh, I think that that's extremely important, uh, to Grant County, uh, because the Hila River is in Grant County. And, um, it's important to, uh, all, uh, available, uh, users. And so while, uh, that thing is, that's supposed to come to fruition this year, they have to, um, to identify whether or not New Mexico's gonna have a New Mexico unit. And so I think it's, it's crunch time. And so, uh, with the Hila San Francisco Water Commission, I, I am the chair now. And so we're trying to make sure that we have something on the beat, uh, in case there was a diversion project. So, um, outside of that, uh, I, I'd like to thank John too. I know I've been begging on him because he's, because he's leaving, but, uh, he's given Grant County a lot of good years. And, uh, I know whenever I came up here to the administrative offices, uh, we had a, we had a mess. And it took several years to take care of that. And, and I've learned a lot from John and, and, uh, and I, I think he's done real well for Grant County. So I, I have to thank him.
Thank you. Actually, Anthony, I just wanted to thank you, um, for all the work that you've been doing, especially on this, uh, Arizona Water Settlement Act money. It's, it's been, it's been tough. I'm sure you've got probably the toughest job as chairman, um, as, uh, as being a chairman of a bunch of different, uh, boards myself. You know, uh, you, you try and take control and do things the right way. And, uh, we really do appreciate you doing that. Um, and yes, I, I do want to go ahead and report, uh, I attended a meeting yesterday with Santa Clara Beard. Anthony was there, myself, and, uh, you know, Cog was there. And what we're trying to do is figure out how we could get the monies to put the walkway, put a walkway between Beard and Santa Clara. I think it's gonna be a great project. Uh, we're trying to figure out what it's gonna cost, see how it's gonna affect the county. Most of that property is county property. So we wanna try and figure out a way to, to connect the two. Um, I think it's very well needed. We've got people walking from Santa Clara to Beard, uh, constantly. And, uh, we just wanna make sure that we avoid someone getting hurt. I, I think it's a safety issue more than anything at this point. Um, I also wanna wish good luck to the state's, uh, bound, uh, Toba Indians, softball and baseball, Silver High softball and baseball, and all the track teams, including Cliff. Um, we have a really unique situation this year where we literally could have two softball state champs in this county and two, two baseball boys state champions in, in this county. This is something that, you know, has never happened before, but, uh, it really could happen this year. They're, they're all great competitors and, and, uh, they're all, they're all, uh, they're all due for, for state championship and hopefully, hopefully it happens this year. Uh, I believe that's, that's pretty much it. Oh, I did have one other thing. Mayor Bousch at our meeting yesterday actually, uh, brought up a situation with, uh, with Beard. Beard has contacted him and asked him how they can utilize the, uh, affluent waters from the sewer plant because they're not, the Freeport is not going to be able to take the waters anymore from the affluent. And we knew this was coming for a long time. That's why we've been wanting to put our reservoir project together. We wanna utilize that water. And, uh, now, uh, Beard is contacting Santa Clara, seeing how we can utilize those waters. And, uh, we definitely know how we can utilize them. And, uh, so I think Beard's coming along. We're going to, uh, to have to try and do something. Um, we've got five hundred thousand gallons of water coming out of that, that sewage plant, uh, five hundred thousand gallons of affluent waters per, per day. And, uh, so that's, that's a lot of water. Um, we can definitely utilize it, try and get it back into aquifer and, uh, also try and, and gain some advantage when it comes to recreation. So, um, you know, we can, we can create some recreation around here. Hopefully we'll bring some more monies into Grant County, which studies would show that would happen. So, uh, um, I just wanna update the, the commission on, on what's going on. Anything else? That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Sure. I just have a couple of answers to Commissioner Ramos's questions on that walking path. Um, I've spoke with, uh, Mayor Bousch and I spoke with Anthony. I spoke with Priscilla. Um, the project would qualify for a CDBG. It would probably be ranked very low and possibly not funded, is what Priscilla said. But the issue we have, and it's the same issue we have with getting any planning grants through CDBG, Grant County is at forty-three percent. We have to be greater than fifty-one percent. You have to serve fifty-one percent low to moderate income and we are at forty-three percent. So we don't qualify for that project out there because it's in the county. We have a hard time. We don't qualify for these planning grants, is what we're finding out, because we don't meet the threshold. Um, the projects that we've done on CDBG have always been into a municipality area, like when we did the daycare building, that was a CDBG, but it was in Silver City. So we got to use Silver City. When Anthony looked at the waterline extension, we used Santa Clara because it was going into the Village of Santa Clara. That type of project, which is a whole project is in the county, they won't let us use either of the municipalities. And so we're now finding that we're gonna have a hard time doing projects in the county. They're really sticking to that fifty-one percent low and moderate income. And we're currently at forty-three. So our option is, is we're gonna have to start doing surveys or do other things, but you can't do surveys for planning grants. So...
And that's why we put this group together, so we could start figuring out how we can do it. So we were talking about Beard and Santa Clara carrying the, the grants. And we were gonna help them with in-kind and match.
Yes. We gave them that option before and Mayor Bousch, uh, is the one that didn't wanna put up any match monies. Uh, Beard was in and Mayor Bousch wouldn't.
Well, it wasn't that he didn't want it, it was because they didn't have the money.
Well, he didn't wanna be fiscal. They needed to be fiscal for it and he didn't want to because Grant County had already pledged all the in-kind. And so that's why...
Well, he changed his mind.
Okay.
And we're a couple years down the road.
But yeah, but that's, he had talked to me about a CDBG project and it won't qualify for those things.
Correct.
Commissioner, what do you think today?
I just wanna, you know, the last few months, weeks, I've had the opportunity to go to the staff several times and ask for help for different things through John. And I just wanna thank the staff. You know, Grant County, just, a lot of people don't realize just how fortunate we are to have the staff that, that, that we have, put together by John and, and, and of course the commission. But, uh, it's just outstanding. Uh, short notice, uh, just the other day, I needed some help. I needed some, some numbers from the jail. Zap. Mike was there within a couple of hours. Adam, Mr. Murray should pick on you a lot, but as everyone knows. And, uh, same thing with the others is that Randy, I, I needed an answer from him yesterday afternoon. Zap. It was done. It was, you know, it was in the box. Anthony, the same thing. Uh, we have a real problem. The problem is that he was talking about. He was on top of it. The lady told me, I talked to her afterwards, uh, said that she was very impressed with Anthony and the way he came out and he addressed it and his knowledge of the, uh, of the subject, man, that matters. So, and then had an opportunity this, uh, Saturday to introduce our, our successor to a friend of mine, and he's really impressed with what she is doing. So we're just fortunate. And John, you put together a great team. And that says something about leadership. Leadership puts qualified people around them. That's good. And so thank you very much. And thank you for taking an old man and, and dragging him along for the last year and five months. Uh, I appreciate all the work that you've done with me. And, uh, with Michael still out there, I think you heard Jock and Chip because, you know, it, it takes, it takes us older, a little longer to get trained, all right? But, uh, Brad has already said that, uh, we'll keep dragging. So, but thank, thank you, staff. And, and thank you, John. I appreciate it.
All right. Well, we're not gonna get anything said nice about you but from me today. So... Not anything. All right. I, I did, I've made sure that you guys got a copy of the Rio Grande Water Fund. It's a written wildfire and water source protection project. And, um, the reason I got that to you, because if you look at the front, the, the written comments are, are due by May ninth. It only gives you a couple of days to read this. What they've asked for, and if you remember correctly, this is the, the lady and gentleman, um, Brent Rasher and Laurel McCarty, they came and gave us a presentation on the, on the watershed protection plan. And this is the beginning of that protection plan. And I'm not asking for this to be added to this agenda, uh, today for, for this week. But, um, it, what it does is, is it treats about, first to start off with about one point six million acres in the project area. Uh, the land is owned by approximately ten different agencies. And currently they have in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand dollars that's already been, uh, provided for this, for match monies. So what they're asking for and all they're asking for is just an endorsement of the plan. So they can put Grant County, uh, even though it's not in our area, hopefully the next one will be a Hila River Water Fund Protection Plan and we can get some treatment here. It may be members. So, uh, that's what they're asking for. So I'm, I'm gonna have that added to the agenda for the next, uh, group of meetings. So if you guys can get through that or part of it. And if you have any comments, please, there's a, a, an address right there, rgwaterfund@tnc.org to, uh, send any comments to. And John, maybe what you'll wanna do is get your copy to Anthony in case he has anything. So, that being said, you can finish that.
Okay. Um, I wanted to, uh, just give you an update where we're at with the budget. Uh, I've been working with Linda Boskis, the finance director. Uh, she sent out, yeah, sent out to all the electeds and department heads to get their budgets, gotten them back. Kinda trying to meet with Mary, I think this afternoon. She was unavailable. Linda was unavailable the other day when Mary wanted to meet. We talked this morning. We're trying to get with Mary this afternoon so we can talk about the two budgets she has under the general fund and also her reappraisal fund. Um, and so expenses, what we're doing is, like we said, we're keeping most of our expenditures flat. Um, what we've looked at in the detention center so far, as Mike pointed out in his report, that we've kind of been for about the last year, year and a half, testing out this training position. Um, because we, um, to see if we could do some of our trainings in-house, save some money that way, get our officers their training before they hit the floor and then do that field officer training that he's doing. So, um, I've tried to build in that position into the budget as a new position to go ahead and keep it permanently because we're seeing a lot of good work being done by having that position. Um, so I think it's really beneficial to the county. Um, the, um, return outweighs the expense on it and the reduction in the liability by having everybody properly trained. Um, as you know, detention center is one place that has a high liability, um, just because of the nature of the business. And so anything we can do to reduce those numbers, um, is really, does good. And it's also helping with the turnover. Um, really, the only turnover we're having now in the facility is we've been using some temporary employees. And, and so we've been losing those employees and, and they're temporary. They're, they're not getting paid the full amount. They're not getting their benefits. They're not getting all everything else. And so when they leave, we understand. Um, but we've just, as we go through and reorganize in his, in his, with his officers and stuff, we've been using some of those. So that's really only been his turnover. So it's been really nice. It's been reducing the costs. Um, actually looking at his budget this year, out of his pre-employment, um, I think he's only spent two thousand out of seven thousand, where in previous years, we've blown through that money. So that means we're, we're doing something right in that facility now. And I appreciate everything Mike and his guys are doing. Um, so we've gotten that taken care of and gotten some adjustments in some of the expenses to try and match up to what the actuals were, if they were justified actuals. Um, revenues, gotten some numbers from Mary, um, gotten some preliminary indications on whether we would be on property tax from her. Um, not the final numbers because like she said, she's waiting to go through a protest. Didn't get a lot. So it looks like we'll be closer to getting those. But, um, took an estimate based on last year's numbers. So I think we'll be pretty close if Mary didn't get a lot of, like I said, a lot of the protests because we didn't look at any new value. Just looked at the value I had to make an estimate. And then I've gotten the copper numbers from Mary. So we're looking okay. It looks like revenues are gonna be up slightly. Um, the, what we're hearing from the federal side on the Pilt and the Secure Road Schools is the, from when we met with Senator Heinrich, Commissioner Ramos and I, uh, there's a group of legislators forming a coalition that they're taking, the, the fight on Pilt and Secure Road Schools has always been that there's not a lot of federal lands in the east. And so that all the people from the east think it's a handout to the people in the west where all the federal lands are. So what this coalition has done is taken some of the legislators from the west and brought them together with legislators from the east that have a similar type of funding they get to Pilt that they're always fighting for because it doesn't come out to the west as much. It's more of a funding for the east side. So they're coming together to come to a common ground and fight their issues together. And so they'll be stronger. That way they'll bring in both the east and the west of the United States together. So that when a bill is presented for, that has the Pilt and Secure, Secure Road Schools funding, it will also include that funding that goes to the east so that those people have no choice but to vote for that. And so it should make Pilt more secure going forward in the future. It looks like they're, um, in talking with them, they don't think there'll be any issues with Pilt coming back next year. They don't know funding levels. They're, they're asking for full funding again. But, um, they, they felt very strongly that they should be able to get it with this coalition form. And they, they feel this is the, probably the best years coming forward than they, that they've ever had trying to get funding for Pilt and Secure Road Schools because of what they're doing up there. So that was, that was a plus to hear that. So we're kinda finishing up. Once, like I say, once we talk to Mary, um, we'll try and get you guys something by Thursday so you can start looking at it and start asking questions about it. It'll be a final budget, not a final preliminary budget that's complete. It'll have the expenses, revenues in there. So you can take a look at where the county's gonna be, where we're starting, where we're ending, um, meeting that three-twelve reserve. The one thing we do have on the Pilt this year that we're looking at and we're getting some backup plans for it, if it does happen, it's gonna affect the entire state, is, um, they've sent us a letter saying that because of the sequester and because of the shutdown, they may be two to three weeks late on distributing the Pilt payments. Well, what that does for you is, um, for Grant County, it's about one point seven, one point eight million dollars. If, typically we get it on June thirtieth at the five o'clock. As the bank is closing, the money's wired into our bank account. Um, if it's two to three weeks late, we will end the year and you could end the year without making your reserve until a week later. Um, so that affects all counties that get Pilt funding.
It's a week, but it could be two to three weeks.
Could be two to three weeks, yeah. Um, so the National Association of Counties is working on, um, making sure those payments are done on time. This happened to us probably two or three years ago, and it was rectified and the payments were done. That wants the urgency because this affects not, it affects all western counties in the United States that receive Pilt funding because we all are using this funding. So...
John, you mean what is Pilt?
Pilt is, Pilt is payment in lieu of taxes. And so what the federal government does is they do not pay us any tax on federal lands. They pay us a payment in lieu of taxes based on a formula. Um, it's based on a formula of the number of acres that you have. Then they take into consideration your population. And then they take into consideration any other federal funding you got. So fully funded Pilt means Grant County gets two point eight million dollars. But because we have a population of twenty-nine thousand, they reduce us down to two point two million dollars for the ceiling. And then because we get six hundred thousand in Secure Road Schools money, they take that off of there and then say, here, you're fully funded. Yeah. So then they say, there, you're fully funded and you get about one point seven million out of two point eight million. And you're supposed to say thank you for them stealing one point one million from you. So that's where we are on the budget. Um, and so we... So that's where we are on the budget, and so we will have that to you. That was one of my main things to get done before I left, is the preliminary budget, so you can take a look at it. Worked very closely with Linda, so she'll be able to answer any questions, and so will I. I'll be available to you to answer questions by phone or come in if I'm in town. I just appreciate everybody. It's been great. I threatened with Commissioner Hall that I was going to sing "I Did It My Way" to close out, but.
Name the words, I don't know, all right?
So, but it's been great. It's been, it's been a great eight and a half years, and we do, we have a bunch of great people. That's what kind of made my decision hard and made my decision easy to leave the county. It's hard to leave everybody here because we're like a big family, and I've, I've loved working with everybody, but I know the county's going to be in great hands, and hopefully whoever takes my place realizes they have such a great group of electeds, a great group of directors, a great group of employees, that their job is easy. All I got to do is, I can still, I still can get rid of people by Friday, so. I still have that authority, but they, it's, whoever takes the job is going to be in great hands, because there are a great group of people here, and if they just listen and work with the people that are here instead of trying to come in and change things, they'll be great, because all these people are, well, they're great. They're, they're an excellent group to work with, and they're all very knowledgeable, and we've got many, many years of experience that you just have to draw on it, because all these guys know their job very well and know other jobs, because they're all doing two and three jobs. So I just, it's going to be a rough next Friday. Not for me. I know.
Can I get a motion to move into executive session?
Hold on a second.
I was a favor, six, five, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, can I get a real call?
Commissioner Ramos, are you aware of the rule being entered into executive session?
Yes, I am.
Chairman Cash, now are you aware that rule being entered into executive session?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hall, are you aware that rule being entered into executive session?
I am.
We're now in executive session, we will adjourn from executive session.